That's cute.
All right, folks, I'm having issues, but now we're back. So very quickly, one of the goals that you established back in the fall for me, your evaluation system. This presentation is what we would call in public education, a cop out. But it is necessary because I wrote a master's thesis. I had a topic to write about, I could find nothing about it. So I wrote about all of the stuff about the topic that correlated to the topic. Teachers evaluations or something like that. I'm going to tell you what we do, why we do it, what it can't, and what we do to try to make teacher evaluations as meaningful as possible. We can't design an effective teacher evaluation system. And I'm going to explain why as we go through the presentation. If we not get through everything by 6:15, we will have to pick this up and continue the conversation. So Linda, if you could help me by looking, who has questions as we go through?
I will.
Quite a few slides, but we're not going to be going all of them in any great detail.
Bob, is this the thing you sent us, the teacher evaluation system? So everybody has a copy of this?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Okay. So let me start the show. And then let me share my screen. First, let me do the screen share here. Okay, are you able to see my desktop now?
Not yet. Yes, we are.
Yep.
Okay, so you can see the slide teacher evaluation, right?
Yep.
So stands for annual professional performance review. It's a process by which teachers and principals are evaluated in New York State. It's in action now. We're now in its law 3012. And now we are indeed, it's been revised at least four times since its inception almost 10 years ago. The APPR was platforms that our current governor ran for that he would hold teachers accountable. And that by holding teachers accountable, it would make for more effective teachers and have a greater impact on students. It started in 2010, and as I said, it was revamped four times in 2018 for to comply with newly passed legislation. Originally, when the APPR was set up, there were two components. There was an assessment component, ranking teachers based on the progress of their students. And there was a classroom observation component. What you need to know is that the APPR is governed by statute. And every phase of it is stipulated in the current statute. Where it was originally designed because the belief was not only effective, that some teachers out there had to be in a, some teachers out there had to be developing. And at the time, Ken will tell you, Carol will tell you, we use words as, we use satisfactory and unsatisfactory at the time. Teachers were one or the what started out as a tool to evaluate teachers quickly became a political football. By 2019, state assessments were completely decoupled from the APPR. It was a give to nice the unions. Because they had been advocating for years that the state assessments were not a good instrument to use to evaluate teachers, and they were finally successful. And in 2009, they were decoupled from the teacher APPR process. According to the Department of Education, the purpose of the evaluation system is to ensure that there's an effective teacher in every classroom and an effective leader in every school. It aims to improve quality of instruction in our schools and in turn improve student performance and college and career readiness. Challenges for BOSIs using the APPR. Traditional measures of student growth are tied to New York State assessments, Regents exams and other statewide assessments. Sullivan BOSIs has adopted STAR reading and math assessments as their standardized testing assessment. It works well for CTE and some special ed and alt ed students. So the instrument we're using is a commercial product that's approved by the state. And all of the instruments used have to be approved by the state. So are yes?
Can I ask a question? On that, can you go to that previous slide? Here it says, it works well for CT and some special ed and alternative ed. What does some special ed leave out include whichever way you choose to explain it?
Because none of this process takes into account students that are alternatively assessed, students that are highly autistic, students that are not on a regular assessment track. And many of our teachers have classrooms full of these high need students that are alternatively assessed through, what do they call them, portfolios? IEP evaluation. But the assessment isn't conducive to all subsets of students.
Thank you.
So it focuses on student learning is good, but there are real challenges with inflammation. Teacher unions are and were opposed to being evaluated by using students' performance. So many systems are cumbersome, like ours. The APPR is negotiated. So the union and management must agree. And the union, management and board sign off on the APPR. Our current APPR was developed in 2016. So it's broken into two parts, educator practice and student learning. Educator practice is basically a rubric that's approved by the state that is used to evaluate the effectiveness of classroom instruction. Not the effectiveness so much of teachers. Because there were things that customarily would be taken into consideration in the previous summative evaluation. So before this, we had clinical evaluations where the administrator walked into a classroom, sat down, observed the classroom, went back, wrote a report. And the summation paragraph could include things like teacher attendance, things like how the teachers interact with their colleagues, whether they participate in district activities. We can't do that anymore. It's strictly a rubric to evaluate educator practice. And in the current ideation of the APPR, it has to be observable. So it has to be something that the administrator can see when they walk into the classroom. If the administrator does not see it, they cannot evaluate it. Even if the teacher says they do it every day. If the warm up, which is the starter or the do now, when somebody walks into the classroom, isn't visible to the observer, even though the teacher would do it every day, it can't be counted in that observation. The second part focuses on student learning. Required student performance measures or student learning objectives and optional student performance measures, which are locally selected measures of student growth or achievement and rigorous and comparable across classrooms. That's from Ed Law 3012D. And this one is a state slide that we incorporated in here just to show you how rigorous and the level of minutia the state goes into and what we can and cannot do. Teacher practice is based on observations. Announced observations account for 80% of the rating. For tenured teachers, we do one announced. For untenured teachers, we do two announced. 20% is an unannounced observation, one for tenured and one for non-tenured. As the school administrators that are on this board will tell you, often observations were called dog and pony shows. Because when you have an announced observation, and the teachers I see that are on the call are laughing, you always knew in advance, you met with your administrator, you submitted your lesson plan, you knew what time they were coming, you knew what period they were coming. And you put on your best performance that day. It may not be what that teacher did every day in their classroom. But that's what an announced observation was. The best thing to come out of the APPR was the unannounced observation. Where an administrator could just stop into a class, sit and observe it without the teacher knowing the administrator was stopping by. Many of these rubrics do snapshots. So the Marshall rubric, you would do six snapshots over the year. You'd stop into a classroom for 10 or 15 minutes of a time. Others require you to do a full period. But it's very structured. And then the observation is rated on a Heidi score. Highly effective, effective, developing and ineffective. And it's all color coded there, and those are the point ranges. And what it is, is the rubric, which I'll share with you in a few minutes, is put into a computer program where the administrator will check the box HEDI. And it assigns the point value to each of those ratings. And it totals the score at the end of the observation. Student's performance. So a sturdy learning objective or a slow is an academic goal set for an educated students at the start of a course. It represents the most important learning that's aligned to the next generation standards. The goals must be specific and measurable based on available prior student learning data. Baseline data may come from a variety of sources such as pre-test, pre-assessment or students prior academic history. So it's at its base, a teacher could develop a pre-test. So if you're a social studies teacher and you're teaching seventh grade social studies, you could develop a 2025 question, multiple choice test to give students on the first day. They all take it since they've never been exposed to the material are odds are, most of them will fail it. And then you set a goal as to where you think based on that pre-test and the students prior academic history, where they'll come out at the end of the year.
Again, this sounds very good for the schools that I taught in. But how does something like this apply to BOSIs?
It applies 100%. It does not disaggregate.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
It applies 100%. There is no disaggregation between a BOSIs, which is a special school and a regular school. All schools in the state are subjected to the same criteria.
So Bob, does that mean our teachers always come out on the poor end of this? Because we have some children that don't have any academic goals. Their goals are to wave hello in the hallway or notify somebody when they have to go to the bathroom as opposed to wetting their pants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And this is why, this is why this is imperfect, because it does not apply for all of our students. And what we do at BOSIs is we use STAR reader and STAR math.
Yeah, but
I'm sorry?
I'm just saying, a lot of our kids don't read or do math.
But for those that do, those that are, that's the commercial product that we use. It stores the data so a teacher with a new student in class can look how that student did in prior years. It gives the pre-test and it helps the teacher identify instructional strategies to use with that student to get them to their goal. Yes, Linda?
Is there, couldn't our teachers develop a pre-test that was appropriate for their children? Such as Carol said, learns to say that they have to go to the bathroom, doesn't bite, you know, whatever the case may be. Can we do those kind of goals with our kids that need that?
I will be very honest with you, yes, that could be done. It would require approval. But our current APPR was negotiated before I started here. My professional opinion, it is cumbersome, unwieldy and takes up too much time.
So Bob, I'm sorry, please continue.
This was negotiated by the administration and by the teachers. And they're married to it. They don't want to change it.
What if, and this is a what if, I'm going to throw it out there. I do not expect you to have an answer to it. But what if you approached our teachers, at least the leaders of our teachers to start with, and said, this makes no sense for many of our kids. Well, for most of our special ed kids, this does not make sense. What if you?
They know that and the state knows that, Linda.
I know, but Carol, but let me finish, please.
Yeah.
But my point is, what if you could get them to support change?
All right, so you're going under the impression that this has something to do with students. It has nothing to do with students. This is all about teachers. These APPRs, and that's why I'm going through this presentation, are skewed in the teacher's favor. And I'm going to show you how we compensate for that towards the end of the presentation.
Thank you.
A lot of what you're going to hear is not something you want to hear. Yes, Carol?
Bob, is a student learning objective individual per student or per class? And if it is per student, our students have IEPs. Is that, is that SLO identified in the IEP?
Now, the SLO has nothing to do with the IEP.
And so it goes.
The student learning objective can be by student, created by the teacher, or it could be institutional. At Sullivan BOSIs, it's institutional.
You know, that's absurd. We all know that's absurd. Am I correct?
And the purpose of this presentation is to show you how absurd it really is.
Thank you. You're doing great.
I, if I'm being successful, I'm doing a good job. Ken said it's spinning.
It's not funny, but it's terrible.
So student performance educated scores are based upon the degree to which goals are attained. The end of course, performance is measured by assessment outlined in the APPR. At BOSIs, the slow targets for students and Regents and alt assessment courses are set collaboratively by teachers and principals. Organizational slow targets are set by the superintendent for instruction, often with input from the principals. Those are the slows based in STAR for basically everyone except those who give the alternative assessment or whose class ends in a Regents. Those are the only two exceptions. So we use an institutional goal for STAR for the majority of our employees. And if you look at this slide here, it shows you what the rating bands are for that 20%. And that percentage is a percentage of the goal. So if you set a goal of 10 and the student makes an eight, that's 80% of it, so they would get a 16. Do you see where that falls?
Yeah, it's all about the teachers. I understand.
Okay. And this is the New York State performance matrix. So you take the teacher practice, which is the observation rubric, and you take student performance. And then you take where the teacher rates on each of those, go down the column and that tells you what that teacher is. So if they're ineffective, ineffective, they're ineffective across the board. If they're effective and effective, okay, they're effective. But if they're developing and developing, they're developing. But if you look at the boxes, ultimately, there's more off to the left. It's more in the teacher's favor because the scores not, never fall down to the lowest side of the scale. Vast majority of teachers are rated as effective or highly effective, and there are a few that are developing. And usually the ones that are rated developing aren't paying attention to the numbers that they're dealing with. And as Carol will tell you, with APPR, it's all a numbers game. There's an appeals process built into the APPR. If the teacher is not satisfied with their score. And the final step of the appeals process is binding arbitration. We've had no appeals in the last three years. We use a product called the Thoughtful Classroom. And Ken, you can look at this, and I'd ask you to go back and look at the slides after the presentation. It is one of the most convoluted products I've ever seen. An overview is a thoughtful classroom is an effectiveness framework as a comprehensive system for observing, evaluating and refining classroom practice. The goal is to create a common language for talking about high quality teaching. We're the only district in Sullivan County that uses this product. Most of the districts use the Marshall rubric.
What is the strength of the Marshall rubric?
Simplicity. See, the APPR had two strong suits that have been lost in the process. The most important thing about the APPR was principals and assistant principals being in classrooms more often to see what's going on. And the instructional conversations that took place after those visits. We went from a reform measure to a compliance instrument. We've lost sight in the past 10 years of what the purpose for tying APPR was, which was to improve instruction. Now it's 100% compliance. Do you have all of your observations in? Do you have all of the paperwork done? Did you meet with the teacher during the defined period? There's a host of, we have an APPR czar at BOSIs. I have somebody assigned to have a spreadsheet to assure that all of the administrators are doing their set observations which within the required negotiated windows. And if we don't stick within the window without permission from the union, a complaint winds up on my desk.
I almost want to say to you, so why are we looking at this if it's all what it is? And I realize this is being
I'll show you why. Because I think it's important that all of the board members understand basically how our hands are tied. It's all prescribed by the state. So very quickly, these are all of the frameworks of a thoughtful classroom. There are 10 frameworks, okay? These are the four current cornerstones, organization rules, procedures, positive relationships, engagement and enjoyment, a culture of thinking and learning. Those are the four cornerstones. Those are the things we go in and we check for when we do our observations. And then we have five episodes of effective instruction. So these are the items that the union choose to negotiate. Because I told you earlier, we can only go in and look at observable items. Unions were given the ability to negotiate out items that they didn't want in their observations. And the highlighted items, Jean, those are the ones we negotiated out? Are you still on the call, Jean?
I'm hearing, yeah.
Yeah, so the yellow ones were the ones we don't observe. That were negotiated out in 2016.
The yellow or the not yellow?
No, the yellow were the ones
The yellow are, the yellow is the ones that we observe. The non-yellow are the ones we do not observe.
So the yellow is the observable ones, Carol, my apologies.
Okay. Let us look at this a moment, please.
Hold on, let me go back.
Thank you.
Well, at least it's, it's more reasonable because there's only four or five. I mean, you can't see that many things. You can't do it.
And this is a considerable amount. So all of these things are in a checklist in a computer system. And this administrator has to go through every time and check off the appropriate boxes.
Just to be, just to be clear, Jean, the yellow is what they've kept?
Yellow is what we've kept. All the other ones, we are not using.
Okay, with our student body, I can almost live with it.
Yep.
And then you have these two slides, deepening and reinforcing learning and applying learning. So if you look at applying learning, we've only have one item in there out of those eight items.
It's comprehensive.
And but, but look at, look at the others. Those might be, those not might be, those are far beyond many of our students.
No, but you also have to remember, we have Gen Ed students in our alt ed program.
So this isn't just for our special ed kids?
This is for everyone.
Okay.
And again, reflecting on and celebrating learning. Look, it's not there. Celebrating student achievement isn't there.
That should be.
Right. But my, the point of these couple of slides is what is negotiated? So it's a very structured process. It's very rigid. It's stipulated in law. You can take your time and go through all of their slides. You will see nothing referring to teacher attendance in any of those slides. So what we've done, the only thing that we have at our disposal is tenure. And I want to take a few minutes to discuss some of the things we take into consideration to help counterbalance those things that can't be taken into consideration in the APPR process. First of all, the state very clearly says that unless they've been effective in two of the four years, there's a formula, they can't be considered for tenure. They have to be jeweled. And a jewel is adding another year in before you make a determination as to whether you keep that teacher or not. But jewel is also fairly broadly applicable. So we can take teacher attendance into consideration as part of the tenure recommendation. And what you're seeing up here is some of the research that Ken and Anne did when we did this presentation about a year ago on teacher attendance. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time going into this. We've already seen this before. But we've been doing this steadily since we had these conversations. And we put this process in place. And of course, for nine months of COVID, it was paused.
Sure.
Because we really didn't have attendance issues. But guess what? We're back now more days than not, and the attendance problems are ticking up. So we just put everything back in place. We took the pause off of that. But we put a very effective procedure in place that involve human resources, the principals, the teacher and documentation.
Again.
We're starting to show what we deem to be excessive absences. If they start showing patterns, three times a year, we reviewed, one, one second, Linda, let me just
Take your time. Okay.
We, HR looks over the data three times a year, sends a spreadsheet to each principal. The principal then needs to contact each of the teachers on that spreadsheet and have a conversation with them. And the teacher gets, the principal gets to decide whether it's a valid conversation or not, and they have to report back to HR the reasonings that the teacher give. So when we first started doing this, we found out many of our teachers should have been recording and filing FMLAs. And they weren't doing it. So HR has been working with them on that. So if you start noticing, the attendance data will report to you as part of the tenure process. We now include FMLA as a special, a separate block, separating that out. If the principal isn't satisfied with the staff member's response, it can lead to a counseling memo. But this procedure has led to more teachers being jeweled for attendance purposes in the past two years than in the previous ten.
Good for you.
Doing three teachers this year.
Including two tonight.
Three, three.
Great.
Isn't on the agenda, but there's two for tonight. I'm sorry, Linda.
Bob, at some point, you know, I, I really believe in, and I, I love the presentation we had about setting goals. I did. I really liked that presentation. Because at some point, I believe that we have to set what our goal is. And our goal here, I believe, is to get better teacher attendance because better teacher attendance is better student out, you know, output without a deal. Do we have, or have we tried a mechanism of speaking with, working with, you know, I watched Teresa at our last meeting when we, she's the head of the teachers union. And when, when I said, when we said something about, you know, getting vaccines, I think that's what it was. And she, you know, she clearly was, appeared to have some frustration on the topic. So, and in the same sense that we do. Can we not discuss this with the union leadership about attendance without?
We do all the time. They're part of this cycle. When we meet with the staff member, they're When we meet with the staff member, they're allowed to bring their union rep with them. We have these conversations during labor management meetings with both of our unions. We had it today with the CSEF because we have issues with our teaching assistants and our aides.
I, I am, that is, that's lovely, and I think it's great. You can't help it. But I want to see us sit down with, and, and I would even join, you know, as a board member, and maybe, maybe you want board members, maybe you don't. You know, that's strictly up to you. But I would sit down with the head of the unions, the, the head people that are there, and try, and they understand the reason we want teacher attendance. It's got nothing to do with paying for subs or this or that. It's got everything to do with students. And see if we can get, maybe get them on our side to work with their, their, their union and their people. I, I, you know, I'm not being a Pollyanna because I do think some of this is possible. And, and you know.
We, but we.
I know we're exhausted, but.
We, we had that conversation with them two years ago when we first rolled out this new process to explain to them why we were doing it, how it was going to work, and their role in it. And they're very supportive. But they also have a membership that they're responsible to.
Absolutely.
And though they're supportive of us, and I will tell you why they're supportive. The last three meetings held with the teachers, letting them know they were being jeweled for attendance purposes, the union did their job and attended the meeting as their representative and said nothing to defend the teacher. They've already told the members.
I know, but I want them to be proactive to the membership, if that's possible.
They're as proactive as they can be. But what they try to do then, Linda, is well.
I don't know.
How many is too many?
I understand your point.
And that's what they're asking us now, and we won't answer them.
But I'm, I'm just, I'm truly. There can't be a number under which or above which. It's gotta be, I know they have a right to those.
Jen has these conversations with Teresa.
They don't have a right to those days. It's their days.
They think they do.
We, what we've done is we've created, you have a right to these days. You have a right to these days if they are truly needed.
Right.
I was a teacher for 35 years.
They think, they, our younger teachers, who will never be here to collect their pension, think their days off.
I know, I know.
But we, Jen has these conversations with Teresa consistently. They're part of these conversations. They're prodding them behind the scenes. When these people go to them saying, they yelled at me for attendance, they tell them flat out, show up to work.
Good. All right. Thank you. I don't want to delay.
We have had those conversations. These next two you've seen before, these are just sample letters that are used to let the principals know what they need to do when we give them the flow chart. This is a memo to file a counseling memo of the meeting with the teacher. If the principal deems that a memo is necessary. You know, sometimes it's extenuating circumstances, and we all understand that. And that's why we've tried to put a multi-layered process together because you may have someone that doesn't know how the system works, and they have a legitimate reason for being out. And that's why we have these conversations with them. And we leave it to the principal. If the principal deems it reasonable, we don't override them as long as the process was followed.
That's fair.
Other teacher supervision issues. BOSI's has the right to supervise teacher for reasons other than student performance and growth. Issues dealing with teacher conduct. Attendance are dealt with through counseling memos and written follow-up. Teachers can, uh, conduct issues are factored into district superintendent's recommendations for tenure. Now, I will tell you, teachers usually in their three or four-year tenure period are angels. They're learning now. The, the talk is going around, how many days is too many days? Well, we're not giving them an answer because if we tell them five, then they'll all be out five days. If we tell them eight, then they'll all be out eight days. So we're not telling them anything. But Ken even brought it up when I spoke with him recently. If you look at the data I'm giving you, you have four years of data for each of their tenure years. And the two years prior to, many of them you'll see upticks. But after instituting this new system, the numbers have come down. Not for everyone, but we're starting to see a decline in that. And I will tell you, in my daily attendance figures I'm getting, it's not my teachers we're having a problem with. We had a conversation at senior management today on that. It's the teaching assistants and teacher aides. They're absent three times more per day than the teachers. And we had a conversation with their union today. On any given day, we have up to 25 people out.
Oh, my God.
We have no substitute.
How do we deal with that?
We use teaching assistants to cover for the teachers because you can use them as subs. But then if the teaching assistants aren't in our pool, it's, it's a domino effect. Um, I would say it goes to work ethic. But the point of what I'm sharing with you folks is what we do to try to compensate for what we have no control over. So we have to review all APPR documents before a tenure recommendation. We have to renew their files for any written records dealing with teacher conduct. We check for the teacher's permanent certification because, believe it or not, you would never let your driver's license expire. But I've seen teachers in my 20 years who let their teaching certificate expire.
How do you let your teaching certificate?
Don't ask me. It happens. It's happened at least twice.
No, 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 I'm serious. I mean, is it a matter of?
Johnny, you pay, you don't pay attention to it. You don't monitor it.
But what makes it expire? Is it taking classes?
Moving our districts. They now have to have continual, continuing education credits. And I think it's 170 hours over the five years of a professional certificate. And many of these teachers don't monitor that. And then all of a sudden, they get into the last year, and they don't have enough credits. So it happens. And a written recommendation from the teacher supervisor regarding performance. Now, I will tell you that two of the individuals that I jeweled this year got recommendations from their principals. But I still jeweled them because I wasn't satisfied with the documentation I was presented.
Good.
So we tried, and we're taking a lot of flack. I've been on the phone with our attorney a lot this month about jewels and stuff. And we have one individual who's refusing to sign their jewel agreement. And the bottom line is this, if they don't sign the jewel agreement, then they're unemployed.
Sure.
Because, you know, when Jen told me today, one of them has not yet signed the agreement. I said, if it's not signed by Friday, we'll send them the notice that we'll be going to the board and may terminate them.
Bingo.
Bob, one last question. And that's about the teacher's aides and the teacher's assistants. Do we have any, anything in place to address their attendance issues? Since you said they're so.
They're, they're part of this process as well. But for example, teaching assistants are certificated individuals. They're certified by the state education department.
Yeah.
So they're represented by the CSEF. But there are stipulations in the civil service contract that permit us to let people go quicker. So if somebody just doesn't show up for three days, they're terminated immediately. There's no discussion. There's no explanation. They're just terminated.
The same question I asked you before with the teachers. Can we have a dialogue with the civil service folks to address this strenuously?
We did, we did it today. We had our labor management with the CSEF. And we spoke with the president, vice president, and the secretary. And then we pointed them flat out, the only concern we have is the attendance of their membership. And that it's unacceptable, and that we would be sharing them, the data we're going to be sharing with the, the principals so that they can follow up with their membership. And we enlisted their help to help us correct this. But of course, the ones we're talking to is the choir.
Yeah.
They're the ones that are always there.
Well, you know, they have to preach to, they have to preach to their folks.
The union leaderships are not the problem. They are telling their members, you need to show up to work. They are telling you, their members, if you don't show up, it could jeopardize your tenure. They're telling them that. But they can't control individual behaviors any more than we can control individual behaviors. We have a opportunity this year to renegotiate the APPR because we are renegotiating our contract. And there are certain things we have to put into the new APPR. So we have to remove any reference through three through eight assessments. But I will be very honest with you. I have already told the union leadership that I would be glad to sit down to renegotiate the APPR outside of the mandatory components we need to negotiate. If they wanted to have a meaningful discussion to improve and simplify the process so it was more effective as an evaluation tool. They have yet to give me an answer. Because unfortunately, the more convoluted the instrument is, the better it is for their membership. But we have put that branch out to them, and we have told them that we would very much like to simplify this, but not for nothing. And this is just a side commentary. Um, the administration here spent a lot of time before my arrival negotiating that instrument. And everybody has a lot of time and effort vested in it. And they really don't want to change. And I'm not going to waste my time trying to force them to do something they don't want to do. But we will try to compensate with the tools we have available. We have a right.
Are we trying to force them into having better attendance?
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
So I guess it is worth your time.
But we're already doing that. That's what I was saying. We are spending time on those things we can't control, teacher attendance. We're spending time on those things we can't control, making sure we have proper documentation in their files. But, you know, we had two issues this year, folks, because we'll have to adjourn in a minute, where we went to a 30-28 for episodes of behavior not covered by anything we discussed for two longtime teachers that went off the rails. And none of that was foreseeable in any of these ideologies. And my hope is somewhere along the line, the state will either allow school districts to use evaluative instruments that are meaningful to themselves without regulating it to the hilt. I don't foresee that happening anytime soon. So you were asking about a more meaningful evaluation system. This presentation shows we've got what we got and why we got it, and what it means, and it is skewed towards the teachers. But the tools in our toolbox are the attendance work we've been doing for the past two years. And HR has been doing a great job. And HR is just Jen and Mary, just two people. And they've been monitoring that. And we just sent out today a list of the principals of all of their teachers that they need to sit down with and meet, and teaching assistants and teacher aides. But I will tell you, we will get pushback from the unions. What do you mean they're, uh, sitting down with us about attendance? There's a pandemic going on. Here's what our data shows. Wednesday's a remote day. That's the single day of the week where we don't have kids. Our absentee rate is probably 30% higher than any other day in the week. We're starting to see trends of Fridays and Mondays again. So we're trying, starting the clampdown. We're saying the pandemic is not over, but work must continue. You are back. You're here five days a week. Your attendance is expected. And the message is being sent because we're going to start meeting with those that had been abusing it throughout the pandemic. The pandemic and the things that they put in place to protect employees were abused to the hilt. If they had not allowed some of those measures to expire, we'd still be dealing with 30% of our workforce claiming the pandemic to be out working remotely. We have teachers that they won't come to work. They want to work remotely, and we're telling them no. You need to be in the classroom with your students. Any immediate questions? And if you have questions afterwards, I knew this was a lot, but you do have the presentation to look through at your leisure. But I wanted you to see, you see the scores on the piece of paper. I wanted you to see what was behind the scores. And I wanted to have a general idea how it was arrived at. If you go on our website, the APPR is on there. And if you're bored one night and you want to go to sleep, it's about 80 pages long. And that's the template.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you, Bob.
That was the template we were required to complete and fill in the blanks by the state of New York. Every school district's APPR looks the same except for certain key type written pieces that are in there.
Thank you very much, Bob. This was eye-opening, not anything else. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay, so now I guess we call this meeting to order.
Uh, yeah, Jean's got to let everyone in the room.
Yep, just give me a moment to let everybody in. We have about 12 people out there.
Oh, and before we go in, just very quickly, if there are any questions concerning the emails I sent home today, Linda, that come up during the course of our meeting, please defer to me. The attorney said the only thing we are to do is read the statement that I have in front of me.
Okay. You all know. I think it's excellent, by the way.
I'm sorry.
The statement is excellent.
Yeah. And we're not reading it unless it's asked.
Okay, I'm gonna let everybody in now.